The special meeting of the HCC College Board of Trustees will commence at 3:30 today. Please stay tuned. She will be also participating remotely as well, video conference in accordance with Section 551. Dot 127 of the Open Meetings Act. There is opportunity for public comments. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizen form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens confirmed to speak before the Board today. So we have some topics here for discussion and action. Is there a motion to approve item A, Consider Adoption of Order Canvassing Returns and Declaring the Results of Board of Trustees Election? Right, there's a motion and a second. You have that, Sharon? Okay, it has been moved and seconded, and we will now have discussion of this item by Chancellor Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We bring to you approval of the Order Canvassing Returns and Declaring the Results of Trustee Elections Held in Trusted Geographic Districts 3, 6, and 8 on November 2, 2021 for the Houston Community College System. Here to present the details and answer any questions the Board might have is Nicole Montgomery from Deputy General Counsel.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Trustees, Chancellor.
Afternoon.
The College has retained Gene Locke and Ben Morris with the former firm of Oric as Elections Counsel. Now I'd like to introduce Mr. Morris, who is here to answer any questions from the Board.
I do, Madam Chair.
Going to wait till you approach us?
That would help, right?
Welcome. Thank you for being here with us, and I recognize Adriana to jump right in before you say a word.
Yes, so on the single-member trustee district with Dave Wilson and Jim Notware. I mean, this is the first time I see that the College even writes the name down. He was absent. We chose not to include him as an option on the ballot. His name was Nowhere, but yet we don't have a problem listing him down here with 287 votes, yet he was a write-in candidate. And Nowhere does it say that for anyone who picks this up to be able to read.
Well, Dr. Temez, we've discussed this previously. I think, you know, the issue with Mr. Notware was that there was a defect on his application. So he was a candidate in the election, but he was a write-in candidate. And that's why his name did not appear on the ballot. Instead, people who wanted to vote for Mr. Notware had to follow the write-in procedures. Basically, he's placed on a list of the write-in candidates. And then the people who did vote for him would have to type his name in. That may have, you know, obviously been why the results of that election were a little more lopsided than others.
But it doesn't say that here.
It does not indicate that he's-
And I have a problem with that. I have a problem with it not saying Jim Notware, write-in candidate. So I would like to request that we write that in. I have no idea why we wouldn't, so unless you tell me it's against the law.
Absolutely not. The purpose of this document is really to just declare the results of the election. So if we want to make a notation that he was a write-in candidate, that's-
I would like to make that amendment. In all fairness, if you pick this up 10 years from now, you're not going to know that this was a write-in candidate unless you make us aware of that. So I would like to make that. I'm not sure how this works.
Are you making a motion that we amend this canvassing report to reflect that Jim Notware was a write-in candidate?
Yes.
Or counsel? Is that stated appropriately?
Yes, so it's a motion to amend the order, and then we would need a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there a discussion about this?
I just, once again, I just think, again, it is our responsibility at this table to make sure that in the end, the information we put out there, and that is, you know, filed away in our archives, depicts what actually transpired with this race. There was one candidate, and there was a write-in candidate. Jim Notware was a write-in candidate. If I pick this up, Nowhere does it say that unless we put in parentheses, "write-in candidate."
Hey, and with that, do we vote on this motion now?
You would vote on the motion to amend.
On the motion to amend, so Sharon, can you prepare that vote for us?
I am preparing it.
Thank you.
And just FYI, when I ran the first time, I was a write-in, and that's how it was noted.
Always note it that way.
Sharon?
Further discussion?
Sharon, if Dr. Hanson is voting, we need him to turn his camera on. We can't count him as present unless his camera is turned on.
Right, I do not have him as present. Dr. Hanson?
What the vote, Sharon?
Yes, one second. I'm making certain for clarity. The vote is amended motion to reflect the language that Mr. Jim Notware is a write-in candidate.
Yes, the motion is to amend the Order Canvassing and Declaring Results Report to reflect that Jim Notware is a write-in candidate.
I'm chair.
Yes, I recognize trustee Glazier.
I have a question of a different nature here on the fiscal impact. It's stated to be determined, is negotiated with Harris County. Do we have any updated information on that, how much it's going to cost, or perhaps how much it's cost in the past, just to give us an idea? Because there hasn't been any report on the fiscal impact, and I just wanted to find out what we know about that.
That question would be directed to the Chancellor.
Madam Chair, trustee Glazier, I do not have an update. I'll ask Ms. Montgomery if she does. In terms of the costs from the county, the only, the Board, because it wasn't necessary to hold an election in Dr. Flowers' district, that would be the only element that would have any savings in it. Is that what you're asking about?
Since there's just no number at all, I wanted to get some time, even if it's a historical background, what we paid last time or something. I just, you know, I put that question up through emails earlier, but I hadn't heard anything yet. So, yeah, I just hadn't heard anything on a perspective as to how much this normally costs and what it might cost. Just wanted to get something on the record as to what it costs.
We can, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can, Chancellor, trustee Glazier, provide that. I hadn't received that. And so I would be going by memory for the previous years, but we do have an accounting of that. I want to say it was close to $325,000 last election. Mr. Morris is shaking his head. And then we just received an invoice for the current one that we just issued. And I don't know if Mr. Morris was the exact amount for that, but I want to say, was it?
I don't recall the exact amount. I do know the way that the costs were allocated was based on registered voters, and it was a dollar and five cents per registered voter. And the figure that Ms. Montgomery just mentioned is right in the ballpark of what the College should expect. But off the top of my head, I don't recall the exact figure.
I would just also add, we have expenses, of course, for publishing in the Houston Chronicle, et cetera. And so we can absolutely give that. But for Harris County, that's what I recall from the last election. And then we just received an invoice, and I just don't recall the exact number. I want to say it's close to $300,000.
We'll get that number, Madam Chair. We're just kind of guessing it right now. We'll get it before you distribute it to the Board.
Absolutely.
Trustee Glazier, are you okay with that response?
Yeah, well, we'll go with it. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we take this to a vote? Sharon, prepare the vote. Thank you.
Yes for me. I haven't turned on.
Dr. Hanson? Trustee Laredo is yes. Trustee Reichardt?
Aaron never showed up on NOVUS, but I'm, yes.
That concludes the voting. Dr. Hanson, your vote on item A?
Can't hear you. No, he went away.
On now, Sharon, so voting is closed.
We will close the voting. The motion passed with a vote of six in favor, one abstaining, trustee Glazier abstaining, and two are absent at the time of the vote.
Thank you, Sharon. Board Counsel, because we amended this, are we still needing to bring that to a vote as it stands, or are we okay with?
Yes, no, if that was the vote, and I apologize, I thought we voted on the amendment already.
Right, so now we have to vote.
So now we have to vote on the item as amended.
Yes.
And trustee Skilling Jones?
Are you on mute, trustee Skilling Jones?
Did we make a motion, and did we make a motion to do it as amended?
Yes, we are voting on the item as amended.
Yes, she said we're voting as the item is amended.
Is this microphone on?
Did you hear that, trustee Skilling Jones?
Trustee Skilling Jones?
Yes, I did, and somebody, hold on, guys, because whoever has remote control locked me out of my NOVUS. I'm affirmative. It's a yes.
Received, thank you. The motion passed with a vote of six in favor, one abstaining, trustee Glazier, and two absent for the vote.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, we're now going to move forward with item B. Consider Adoption of Orders Certifying the Names of Candidates for Runoff Trustee Election. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. We will now discuss this item. I yield the floor to Chancellor Maldonado. I yield the floor to Chancellor Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is requesting approval of the order certifying the names of candidates for runoff trustee elections for geographic district eight. With your permission, I'll turn the floor over to Nicole Montgomery to answer any questions the board might have.
Yes. Any questions?
Here.
Recognize, Trustee Glazer?
Thank you. I just think, follow up. So, so are we looking at anticipated cost of a dollar in the nickel per registered voter in that district for runoff election or?
We'll get that amount to you. We do have a estimate amount and then we won't have the full amount until after the runoff takes place and then the county will shore up that amount.
All right, thank you.
No questions or discussion? Yes, recognize, Trustee Tamas?
Regarding, I know we're talking about fees and all and it's always important and all, but we don't control that, right? It's the county. So I just wanted to make it clear that we don't control that. In the end, we need to know what it's going to cost, but we have to have elections and all and, and it is what it is once they bill us, right?
Absolutely. And what they do is based on how many organizations are having the election, we have a certain percentage that is assigned to us. So it's a fee schedule that is sent out to all the governmental entities that Harris County conducts the election for, and then we have a portion that is assigned to us. That way we have enough for budget-wise. We do have budgeted funds for this because we anticipated that there could be one runoff election. So we feel confident that we're within our budget so far and based on the estimate that we have. But you're absolutely correct, Trustee Tamas.
Yeah, just for anyone watching, I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
And also, if we could also, before you, you step aside, it's also clarify, we do control when there's not an opposing candidate. So those are expenses we do control. So in the example, when I did not draw an opponent, then we made that decision to not carry forth that expense and removed myself from the ballot.
Exactly, absolutely.
So that we can control.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just want to say I, I thank you for that. That's, that was the discussion I wanted to have at the table because in the presentation that I was supported, there was not, there was nothing about that. So I wanted to, glad that my trustees brought it up and talked about it. Yes, we got to have elections, I agree. And yes, it's part of our budget to do so. And I just wanted to kind of find out and let the public know, you know, what they're, what we're looking at and what, what it, what it costs because it costs them money for us to, to put them on. So appreciate the discussion. Thank you, and I look forward to getting the numbers. Thanks.
Thank you.
Additional discussion or questions? Yes, is that you, Trustee Skelland Jones? No, resting your hand on your face, got it. Okay, with that, then I think we're ready to move forward now and vote on item B if we can bring that to a vote.
Dr. Hanson?
Are you clear, Sharon?
I am clear, yes. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero with one absent.
Thank you. We will now move forward with item C. Consider adoption of order calling runoff trustee election. Is there a motion?
So move, Madam Chair?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. We will now discuss the item. I yield the floor to Chancellor Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a recommendation to approve the order calling for runoff trustee elections for December the 11th, 2021, in trustee geographic district eight for the Houston Community College System. Making provisions, making provisions that con, that conduct at the giving, excuse me, making provisions that giving notice of the, conduct notice of the elections, authorizing a contract with Harris County for election services and containing other provisions related thereto.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery.
Any questions, discussion? All right, here are none. We are now ready to vote on this item.
Sharon, my vote is yes.
And Dr. Hanson?
Right.
Okay, received. Voting has concluded.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Now, Board Counsel, do we have any closed session items?
We do not, Sharon.
Okay, very well.
I'm sorry, Sharon didn't announce the results of the vote.
The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero with one absent.
Okay, very good. So there are no closed session items today, so this portion of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Houston Community College System has now been adjourned at?
3:50 PM.
I just wanted to say congratulations to the trustees that won the reelection.
Thank you. Officially, our official president.